San Juan Batista, City Council Special Meeting of May 26, 2020 is now in session. Vice Mayor Jordan, please do this in the black.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All the way.
Mary Edge?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember De Vries?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Thank you. We have a forum.
Thank you. So we now go on to item two, public comment. Do we have anybody that would like to make a comment on items on the agenda? I think we have somebody.
No, I think it's...
Oh, was it that?
It was all the plugs and stuff in it.
Yeah, I had an issue with the big screen going down.
Please sit by. We are experiencing technical difficulty. Oh, my, why not?
Oh, shoot. Oh, there we go. We're up. Yep.
Just had a reboot.
Okay. Thank you for your patience. Are there members of the public who wish to speak? Any participants raising their hands? We've got a few to admit. Three more being admitted now.
Anybody with public comment, anything that is on the agenda tonight?
You can wait till they are...
Maybe. I see you.
Anybody? Do we s... do we have anybody? No.
Oh, that was our attorney? That's nice.
We're official. Is that a hand up at the very top of the...
There's Deb.
Paper?
Okay, people still coming in? Yes, sounds good. Okay, so our presentation is ready. No public speakers?
Okay, so if we don't have any public speakers, we're going to go on to item three, our presentation, A, Monterey Bay Community Power Annual Member Agency Update.
So I need to hold on JR.
Who is going to be doing the presentation?
Okay, JR should be able to share us. JR Killigrew from the Monterey Bay Car Community Power is here. He gave us an update tonight about latest things happening with our cooperative power arrangement. It's grown tremendously. It's responding to the COVID crisis. So JR has a lot to share with us today. JR, are you able to share your screen?
Yes, it says disabled screen sharing, so if I could have that functionality back, that would be helpful.
Okay. Allowed to record, put on Waverham, make co-host. Huh. Okay, well, I can make you a co-host.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that help you?
Yes.
Awesome, okay.
Let's see.
There you go.
Did everyone see my screen, okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, as well as City Manager Reynolds and the great community of San Juan Batista. My name is JR Killigrew. I'm the Director of Communications and Energy Programs, and it's an honor to be here to engage with everyone virtually as it relates to Monterey Bay Community Power. I did want to start off this presentation tonight highlighting the pretty significant evolution of Monterey Bay Community Power. It started in the Monterey Bay region with the first tri-county community choice energy agency launching between Santa Cruz, San Benito, and Monterey in the entire state of California. And that model has seen, has demonstrated a lot of value and opportunity for our neighbors down in San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara County. So we originally had 19 member agencies across the tri-county region, and now we've actually expanded to include 32 member agencies across the five-county Central Coast region. It's been a pretty phenomenal opportunity to engage with cities across, cities and counties across the Central Coast and be able to kind of offer this model up to communities that would not be able to start this program on their own. So we are in a very amazing place in terms of our agency's growth, having just started two years ago in March of 2018. So in effectively about 26 months, we've been able to expand our service area to now include the communities of Paso Robles, the city of San Luis Obispo, the city of Morro Bay, as well as Santa Maria, Guadalupe, Solvang, Galita Carpinteria, and the county of Santa Barbara. But we still are maintaining our roots in Monterey Bay. Our headquarters are here, and we've opened up a satellite office down in San Luis Obispo. But we certainly are appreciative of all the leadership from San Juan Batista, as well as the San Juan, San Benito County, to help this agency get started and deliver value across the Central Coast. We did want to highlight some of these accomplishments that we've had since, again, just starting and launching service back in 2018. You know, we have a very strong enrollment percentage of about 94% of all of our customers. And in terms of delivering value to the community in terms of economic vitality, we've set aside about $12 million for energy programs. That's helping to electrify the Central Coast. We've delivered over $17 million in bill savings to customers across the tri-county region. And then I'll speak to a little later a resiliency fund of $25 million to help not only the public sector, but also the private sector, create backup energy supply in case of the public safety power shut-offs. And then I think one of the biggest standing opportunities that this agency has been able to deliver is its fiscal responsibility. We have over $120 million in reserves, and we're actually pursuing a credit agency as we speak. The goal would be to achieve that rating sometime this fall. And that would allow us to be able to procure more affordable, large-scale utility renewable projects that ultimately could drive down the cost of our power supply. Just to kind of give folks an update about our power mix. So again, all customers are enrolled with Monterey Bay Community Power by default, and then they can choose to stay with EGN or the Investor on Utility. Our power mix is what we call the clean energy power mix. It's of 34% renewable energy resources. That's geothermal, solar, wind, biomass, and bio-waste. And the other remaining is large hydroelectric. But we also do have a voluntary service offering called MB Prime. So for a little more than an extra penny per kilowatt hour, those folks, our customers, can support 100% renewable energy. Now, one of the main drivers of a community choice energy agency is the ability to go out and build new California renewable energy projects. And we did want to highlight that in the last about 18 months, we've signed a group of really exciting contracts that span not only California, but also Nevada. But about 40% of our annual energy demand will be met by new renewable energy projects. But I did want to point to the fifth option or the fifth update. We are right now in the process of finalizing an agreement with a battery storage provider to put a 60-megawatt battery storage project in South Monterey County that's, that is joined with a solar project that is being built right now. So it's the first utility-scale project that we've been able to deploy in our service area. So we're really excited, excited about that opportunity to be able to scale up renewable resources within our, within our service area. I did want to share a quick update on the metrics as it relates to the great city of San Juan Batista. You folks have about 1,000 accounts that are enrolled with us. The enrollment's at about 92%, which is strong. And we've been able to deliver savings to the city, just the city of San Juan Batista's commercial accounts with us, about $1,000 in 2018, and that actually jumped to about $3,000 in 2019. But we've also been able to deliver savings to about $40,000 to the community since we started service in 2018 through the end of 2019. I did also want to touch upon what is arguably the largest financial response to COVID-19 of any community choice energy program in the state of California. Our board acted very swiftly in concert with not only our policy board, but our operations board, that we reduce all of our customer rates right now in the month of May, as well as June, by 50%. And that will deliver over $22 million of financial relief to all of our customers across the tri-county region. And that equates to about $6.5 million for residential customers, about $11 million for commercial customers, and just over $5 for agricultural customers. Now, on the side that I mentioned earlier about, you know, we are, really, our ethos and our goal as an agency is, one, to be responsive to community needs, but, two, to also reinvest any revenue that we have back in the community. So we do that through energy programs as well as lower rates. Right now, we're focused really on fuel switching and electrification. So some of the major highlights that we've had this year are launching a $7 million electric vehicle incentive, electric vehicle infrastructure program that right now has about $6.5 million of those reserved. And actually, all of the funds in San Benito County have been reserved. So we're really excited to share at a later date what projects in San Benito County, as hopefully San Juan Batista are able to see, increase ED infrastructure. We actually just launched a really phenomenal program today at 9:00 AM. This was incentives to help both market rate and affordable housing developers bring on all-electric multi-unit dwellings. And actually, we had $1.2 million set aside for this program, and we got over $1.6 million worth of applications within four hours. It's a pretty amazing thing to think about that in light of what's going on. There is that opportunity for us to be a part of the, of the housing issues that are going on in the region and providing solutions for that. And then I just want to touch on one other great program. We're partnering with the Monterey Bay Air Resources District to help support school bus electrification. So if there are any school districts in San Juan Batista, as well as San Benito County, that are looking for electric school buses, we're partnering with the air district to provide 100% of the funding for an all-electric school bus. And we did want to follow up on the resiliency efforts that are going forward with Monterey Bay Community Power. As City Manager Reynolds mentioned, we have set aside $20 million for the public sector, and that is through low-cost financial support at about 1.8% interest. And that's open to any public sector customer, whether it's a member agency, a city or county, a school district, a hospital, a water or wastewater district. And so this will be just providing an opportunity that in case you're looking at replacing generators, providing backup supply in light of the public safety power shut-off, MBCP or Monterey Bay Community Power is here to help give you that low-cost financing to make sure you can be up and running during the public safety power shut-offs. And then finally, just wanted to provide a couple key highlights about our effort to help unify the Central Coast. One, we're establishing an annual meeting this September. The second and the third, we'll be inviting all of our boards, our policy board, our operations board, and our community advisory council to get together and discuss what are the big things that Monterey Bay Community Power is moving forward with. The second bullet, which is a pretty, a pretty fascinating evolution of the agency, is because of our expansion, we actually are seeking board approval next Wednesday at our policy board to actually change our name to Central Coast Community Energy. And as I mentioned, we're opening up a satellite office. We did, as of April of last month. And then we're actually moving to a more, even more beneficial rate structure for our customers in 2021 because we've achieved our reserve target, and we'll be able to pass through those savings to our customers through this new cost of service model. So really, a lot of great opportunities that are moving forward with, for Monterey Bay Community Power. And at that point, I want to just share our contact information, and I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions should the city council have any for me. So thank you very much for an opportunity to speak with you all. We greatly appreciate San Juan Batista's leadership, and especially City Councilmember John Freeman, who is an active participant on our policy board, as well as City Manager Don Reynolds, who has been a great advocate on our operations board.
So thank you very much. Can you do me a favor and spell your name for me?
Yes, it's JR, and the last name is Killigrew. It's K-I-L-L-I-G-R-E-W.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. It's very informative. I don't know, Councilmember Flores, do you have any questions or comments?
Sorry, how it turned off? No, no questions.
Okay, Councilman De Vries, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions or comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Freeman, do you have anything to say?
I just wanted to say thank you to JR, and I'll see you next Wednesday.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Leslie?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, JR. How about you there? I forgot to ask you?
No, it's, it's exciting. It's a learning curve for me. Councilmember Freeman has been dedicated to this. Our term ends. We share our term with Hollister. So John and I participate through the end of this calendar year, and then next year Hollister City Manager and a council member will be part of their board. So that's how they split it up right now in San Benito County. But they're growing, and they're strong, and they've been a great asset, a great asset to have in our community.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then now we'll go on to item four, our consent items. All matters listed under the consent items may be enacted by one motion authorizing actions indicated for those items so designated. There will be one separate discussion of these items unless requested by a member, the city council, a staff member, or a citizen. So do I have a...
I move that all matters listed under the consent agenda may be enacted by one motion. This motion.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay, thank you. So...
Roll call vote?
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember De Vries?
No. Just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Make sure everybody's paying attention.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion is stated by the maker passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right. Now, we need, I need a vote for the affidavit of posting the agenda.
Yeah, that's the whole thing.
Oh, that's the whole thing?
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's part of the content.
Yes, 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 sorry. Okay, so now we go on to item number five, action items. So... We consider forming an ad hoc committee to guide the urban growth boundary policy formation.
Thank you, Mayor Edge, members of the city council. We had a detailed presentation for our planning commission March 3 about the need for an urban growth boundary and that unanimous support from the planning commission to move forward with that. We identified that we're somewhat vulnerable right now. We have not recorded our, even our sphere of influence of LAFCO. And so development on our, on our borders is, is...
Hello? Hello?
Yes?
Can you mute for us, please?
Is that Deb?
Was that Deb? And, and then we came back with a very similar presentation.
This is Yolanda from Luna Ma.
Can you please, we're not on your item yet. Could you wait for us?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, because I'm so confused and I'm having a hard... Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just hang on a minute. We'll get to your item. Thank you. Oh, she probably did it, okay. And then on the city council, considered the urban growth boundary on April 21. And I've been working a lot with our planner, David Mack, and talking about, since we got so much support from the council, that this would be a big project for our next fiscal year. So they're working on a proposal for us. It's basically a general plan amendment that would have its own environmental quality review and a series of special studies. So as you can see in the second bullet, it's a lengthy project, requires a lot of citizen input, and could equal $250,000 to $300,000, which would be paid in part by community development funds received from development projects here recently, and also partially paid from our general fund. But that would come back as a CIP with a solid proposal attached to it. One of the, one of the best recommendations we've received is from a councilmember De Vries, who has a lot of experience doing this work with the prior general plan and urban growth boundary. So councilmember De Vries stepped up with the idea that we form an ad hoc committee, and it would make sense, Mayor, if you consider Dan to be part of that committee with his experience. That's up to the council. But the reason I have the ad hoc committee to guide this process on tonight's agenda is because I wanted to put it on the planning commission's agenda for June 2. So, and then I'll, Dan, I'll let you in here in just, just a sec. This is my last slide on this item. So the ad hoc committee would lead community feedback, hold special meetings for stakeholders, and town hall meetings. We'd have two councilmembers, two planning commissioners, and one large member. And then the council can appoint tonight or wait until the next meeting, and then the planning commission will be asked to consider June 2. So with that, we might want Dan to pitch in.
Okay, so Dan, did you want to add anything to this?
I, I don't think that there is much to add. That was an excellent report by the city manager. Thank you, Don. I did want to reiterate a couple of foundational points, though. At one, this is my view, this is my philosophy, but I think some or all of you will share it, that when it comes time to do things like a general plan for a community, or to an update, or an amendment to a general plan, it is the community that needs to drive that discussion. So a process like this, should we decide to embark upon it, in my view, should be driven by community participation. That means that you have town hall meetings, and community center meetings, and focus groups, and surveys. You do that stuff ad hoc. You want to err on the side of too much community participation rather than too little. And so that way, the community can feel as if this amendment is a byproduct of what the city of San Juan Batista felt, thought, and identified with at that point in time, 2020. So if I would be considered for a position on this ad hoc committee, which I very much would be interested in, for Stipend and serving with, for that reason only, to facilitate that type of community conversation and just to hear what the people have to say.
Okay, well, thank you. And I think I had mentioned and expressed interest in sitting on this ad hoc committee. And so, you know, I don't know if anybody else would like to, I don't know, throw in the towel, challenge me, but I would like to sit on that committee.
Amen.
I would sit on it, too, so...
Yeah. So, so then we'll get to planning commissioners. And I guess when you meet on June 2 with them, they can decide, you know, who, who they'd like to... And I'm wondering, and it would be an at-large member of the community. So how do we decide on that?
Well...
Ask people to submit an application or something.
Yeah, we can, we can submit letters of interest.
Right.
But I also heard, I don't know, did you want, I thought John spoke up and said he wanted to be on the committee also. Okay.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Don.
Okay, John.
Yeah, but that can't, we, there can't be three, so...
I understand, I understand. I'll let you guys talk about it.
I represent, I represent San Juan Batista, the LAFCO board, so...
Okay.
Okay.
So Dan and Mary, and then two planning commissioners, and a letter of interest.
And a letter of interest from the community at large.
From the community.
Okay.
And if we wanted to, we could let the four of them go through the letters of interest and decide who the best candidate is.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
This is Cara. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd be interested in serving on it as well as an at-large member. But I think you said there was going to be an application form.
Yes. So that's okay. We'll, we'll publicize that, and then you can apply.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cara. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, this is Louis MacChain.
Hi, Louis.
Oh.
I don't, I, I want to...
Louis, planning commissioner.
You know, to, well, I would like to, to be in this committee. You can count on me.
Thank you.
That's a good one.
That's great. Thank you.
So one more planning commissioner?
Yeah, one more planning commissioner.
And are you meeting with them?
Yeah, I'll be part of that. Tuesday, right.
So you can throw it out to them and get one more?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, I spoke to a few of them today.
Okay, cool.
So do we have any other comments, questions?
Is this an action item or just...
It is an, an action item. It's under action.
Yeah, I did not prepare a resolution, but if the council wanted to receive an action and then vote on the appointees, that would be great.
Okay.
I make a motion to vote on the council's appointees.
Right.
Of Dan and Mary.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can we do a roll call?
Now we, now we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay, who are the, who are the two individuals there?
Dan and Mary. Dan De Vries and Mayor Edge.
Okay, yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay.
Find my ear.
So we're, so we're going to do a roll call. We're going to do a roll call vote now.
It should be a vote on Mary or John.
A vote?
Yes.
We can do both at once, if you like.
That would be an amendment.
Up to you guys.
Or Dan.
Dan.
Well, the mo, the, the motion was made for Dan and, and Mary. Somebody could amend that. I was going to say emotion.
So now, now what do we do?
Well, you have a...
We can include John.
Well, you have a motion.
But John, John, we can't have three councilmembers without, and you probably realize this, but then we have to get into the NMSA and Brown Act and all of that.
Right, right. I, I was, well, if you want me to step back, I will. Okay, it's fine.
No, no, John, no, no, John, I'm not suggesting that. I just didn't know what the question was before the council right now is.
We leave the election between Mary and I, or between Mary, I, and you.
Right, okay.
So...
Deb, does Deb want to weigh in on that?
Deborah, how do we do this?
One by one.
Yeah, try one by one.
Okay, so all those in favor for Dan De Vries?
Okay, so, Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes. So now we'll do me.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Well.
Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
Okay, 4-1.
Okay, so now what?
Okay, that's it. I agree with Paul.
That's it, okay. All right. So now we go on to, let's see, we've already voted, so that's it. We go on to item six. Discussion items. So we're going to have a report on the COVID-19 by our city manager, Don Reynolds.
Right, just a brief report today. The county's numbers have been rising gradually. If you get the NICSOL reports, they have increased by six in the past week, and five the week before, and four the week before. So they've been, been, it's, it's doubled in the past couple of weeks and just see the number of new cases. But overall, we're holding that steady pace. It's just getting a little precarious. And if you look at the, the sheets, you'll see that the, the contaminated people spreading from person to person is now growing a lot faster than, than through outside contact. So the trends are changing, and we need to keep an eye on them. And that's why we need to keep the tight control of our... And that's why we need to keep the tight control of our, of the existing shelter in place rules and guidelines that we have. That's very important. San Benito County also released a press release today, opening up county hair salons and barber shops to open immediately. So that's, that's newsworthy information, especially for those business owners who haven't been able to open their business for the past several months. Unrest is increasing and, and from recommendation from our staff meeting today, we have our incident command briefing, the first of every week. We decided to postpone the opening city hall. The community has adjusted pretty well to paying the bills through the, through the payment box. And, and we're happy to meet people if they call in advance and then talk to them. I've had a few community development style meetings in here with applicants and others. So Rich recommended especially that we just kind of hold the line for now until, till things chill.
Okay.
And that's, and that's because this weekend was busy. Not as busy as Hollister, having read the most recent NICSIL shootings and other things, unfortunately.
Oh, my.
But, but our, we had a lot of, a lot of visitors in town, a lot of visitors from Santa Clara County and other, and other counties. So we need to, we need to be diligent and, and try and, as we open up, be careful, is what I'm going to say, not be risky. So, but it's interesting to watch how the city business owners, for the most part, are taking matters very seriously. There are very few exceptions. And certainly businesses have helped. And so that is really good stuff. That's really good to see the, the whole group working together as a team. I wanted to give you a brief update on the transformation of Third Street. At the last council meeting, we approved changing Third Street to a single lane of one-way traffic heading from the Alameda West to Mukalemi. The traffic engineer is on board. We have Keith Higgins working on this. I spoke with him twice in a conference call today. Angle parking may be a challenge because of the width that you need to do that. So we're looking at that particular issue and access and ADA mobility. So he's on board and he's going to get right to work on this, and that's really good news. He's going to listen to our community meeting tomorrow morning at nine with the business community. So he'll be able to hear firsthand what's on the, the mind of the, of the business forum tomorrow at nine. Also, we have circulated design guidelines and they're pretty simple in their, in their current form. They are simply a copy of the city of Richmond's design guidelines. And I'm happy to send that out to anyone who's interested. It's, it's pretty basic program. It's got an X through, through designs that they don't like. They look like bicycle racks and it's got a, got a plus for the wrought iron or, or the attractive pieces. And that's the way we want to go. There were a lot of questions and feedback from business owners this weekend. How much can a city pay to help put up those fences around business owners' restaurant tables? And we haven't really had that conversation. I think, as I recall Tuesday, we decided not to go that route, but get the design guidelines in place first. So those are the two items that, that we're, that we're moving slowly with, that we want to be careful with. The traffic engineer and safety, and then the design guidelines. So to that end, June 2nd, we're taking design guidelines and ideas from the HRB. And, and we hope to get a decision from the HRB Tuesday, June 2nd, on design guidelines. So hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll be able to reopen Third Street and transforming it, assuming we can get the street restriped, et cetera. So things are moving quickly, as quickly, as quickly as we can. We want to be mindful and grateful as we move forward on this. So our fourth, our fourth business owner focus group is tomorrow morning at nine. These have been very successful ways to communicate. We've had as many as 30 participants. People who cannot participate or don't have a laptop or iPad, they can make a reservation at Doña Esther's or Brewery 25. And there are the contact numbers. So if you make a reservation, you can go and sit with other business owners safely spaced with a mask on and participate in these meetings. And the agenda tomorrow's meeting includes introduction from Mayor Edge, and then some guest speakers who are business owners in our town. They'll, they'll be able to share their reopening experience or maybe why they have decided not to reopen. And that's really good. And then I'll give a, a repeat presentation of the Third Street modification progress. And then we always leave lots of room in these meetings for questions and answers. So that's, that's on tomorrow's list. I'll, I'll say that our, our Liz on, Liz Turner has been really busy helping businesses understand the guidelines from the state. She spends a lot of time handing out signs and posters for people's businesses, asking the, the guests at those businesses to wear masks and follow the protocols. So Liz, Liz's number at the bottom, if you have any questions about how you should reopen your business or, or if a business is reopened in the right way, that's the way to do it. So having said that.
Question?
Well, let me, I'm almost done with the business part, and then we'll take questions. If you see someone who's not operating the way they should or, or you think is a nonessential business, the county health officer encourages us to call this line. Not necessarily call the sheriff, you can call your city council member if you like, but this is a direct way to report a business that is not, that is not functioning in, in the way that they should be. So the more reports they get, the more action they will take. And so with that, if anyone has any questions about the COVID-19 status, we're happy to take them.
This meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM is for business owners only?
Yes, sometimes Benito Link and others participate.
Yeah, it's just not open to the general public?
Not open to the general public, no, it's bypassed, will you?
Okay. So does anybody have any questions or comments, Sessar, Cara?
No comments or questions.
Uh, councilman Freeman?
Yes, I have a comment. I, I talked to a number of, well, at least two, two restaurant owners, it's lasted a couple of days, and they are really worried about the crown on Third Street. Where, where we have, we're planning on roping off their places for the tables. The street is very, very slanted. They don't know if they're going to be able to keep the plates on the tables.
Very true.
Yeah. I noticed that Hollis, a picture of Hollister, Benito Link, they had their tables right in the middle, literally on top of the ground, so there wasn't any slant one way or the other. Of course, they shut down their whole street, which is, of course, a little bit different tack than we took. But I, I just wanted to throw that out there, that there's, there's a lot of concern about the, the crown on Third Street, which is frankly much higher than most other spaces.
Thank you, John. Councilman DeVries, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor, thank you. And John, here's how I would respond to that, is we're not going to know, and typically know. So I know that we also are pretty ingenious people to figure out things like shims and making the table level. So I don't think the reason for the slope and the crown and so forth is a reason not to pursue the concept at this point. I think we should continue to pursue it and just see where we are and see how we can set these things up. I think it's going to turn out okay, I really do.
I actually agree, I was not asking to not pursue it, I was just throwing out some concerns.
No, yeah, and you're, and you're absolutely, thank you for doing that, John, because I've been hearing the same comments as you have. And then overall, city manager, I'd say that, Don, I couldn't hear you perfectly, as well as I wanted to, when you said that time, your timing, your timeline or timing for getting this thing rolled out. When do you, but in other words, when do you expect to have Third Street reconfigured, people stepping out on these tables? What, are we talking about middle of June, end of June, July, what?
Towards the end of June, councilmember. I hope to get the completed traffic plan and design guidelines by a week from Friday, and then we can begin to implement. So whether we put up redwood boxes and planters to close the, the streets, we have to schedule the restriping. So once we get our, our designs completed, hopefully by a week from Friday, then it would take us two weeks or so to implement.
Okay, that sounds great. And so far, has Keith, has Keith said anything to you informally that gave you any cause for concern or roadblock or a showstopper on this, or is it all, is it all green light so far?
Keith, who is Keith?
Okay, so Keith Higgins is our traffic engineer that we retained to work on the study. And he's freed up his schedule to work on it as fast as he can, which is why we spoke today. Keith's biggest concern was the angle parking and not having enough room for the, the cars to angle park and then back into that, that middle lane. So we talked about some compromises. Interestingly enough, I talked to the superintendent of parks today, who was through town this weekend, and commented that we could benefit by having motorcycle parking. So what if we did motorcycle parking there along the orchard? Instead of having one bike take up an entire car lot, we could, we could have 10 or 15 bikes there and that would free up a lot of spots. So we're looking at as creative ideas as we can, and we'll bring this back in draft form before it's final.
Sure, but thus far, and again, I'm just asking, you know, for a summary of your informal conversations with Keith Higgins, the traffic engineer, so far you haven't heard him say anything about a showstopper? Like this is, like, there, there may be issues, but they are resolvable by the city?
They are resolvable. The, the intent of the conference call today was to find out what had to happen and, and what could be changed. And I said, well, the center lane has to happen. And, and, and we didn't want stop signs between the blocks. We talked about speed strips, some way of otherwise slowing the traffic down to five miles an hour. So the parameters council provided me last Tuesday. I simply reflected with Keith today and got our city engineer all on the same page. He didn't see any reason, we, he didn't see any showstoppers.
Nice.
Okay, great. Well, that's great news. So it's, it's green lights and all systems go. And, and thank you, Don, for, for the summary. And I said this before, and I don't say this to be a pain in anybody's backside, however, I want to just reiterate what I believe is the importance and necessity of trying to get this thing rolled out as quickly as possible. Our businesses need this shot in the arm as quickly as possible, the city needs it. I think it'd be really awesome to get it going as quickly as possible, even if it's not perfect with the planters haven't been sanded or painted or, you know, whatever. Let's just get something going with the realization that after it's installed and after it's operational, we can always continue to improve it. We can improve the design, we can improve the, the planter boxes or whatever. But I think that we'd be doing ourselves a disservice if we waited, waited, waited until it was this, you know, Architectural Digest-type version of this thing, as opposed to getting it going now. And I know it's a broken record, and I, I don't mean that to sound like a nag, Don, but I think you know where I'm coming from, that the sooner we can get something like this operational and online, I think the better for our town.
And, and that's why the city engineer is focused on this project, councilmember. I emphasized that to Julie from the get-go. Last Wednesday morning, I called her and said, we got to get on this now. You know, stop construction on Third Street, stop whatever else you're doing. No, I didn't say that. She, she's really busy, as you can only imagine. When you find seven inches of concrete under the asphalt on Third Street, you got issues. So, so, yeah, no, she's made this a top priority, so I really, I really think she's on it. And that was the element I was most concerned about, was the engineering. So, so it's going to be safe, it's going to be safe, it's going to be attractive. It will make us, you know, I'm sure there'll be mistakes, but the fact that it's temporary gives us a lot of latitude on, on how we roll it out. If this were going to be a permanent change, it would be a much more detailed vetted process. But this is a temporary solution. We're testing the water to see how it goes. And so with that, we should be able to expedite things fairly easily.
Well, that's, that, that's phenomenal. I wish you all could see me right now, but I've got a smile ear to ear, because that's just, that's just beautiful news. So thank you, Don.
Okay, we'll do our best and we'll keep you posted.
Thank you, thank you, Dan. Any other comments from the public, questions?
This is Cara, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I go ahead?
Yes.
Um, first of all, this is our, I, I hear what Commissioner DeVries is saying, but this is our national historic district. And I didn't hear our city manager say it was going to be run by the Historic Resources Board. Because we're talking about striping, you know, planter boxes. You're saying it's temporary, but who knows how long temporary is? So I think there should be some kind of design review by the Historic Resources Board, which I'm sure can be done fairly quickly as well.
That, that's going on now, that's going on now, and it's scheduled for the June 2nd Historic Resources Board meeting?
So they're meeting on June 2nd?
Yes.
Okay. And then I, I'm wondering, the meeting, community meeting that you're having tomorrow morning at nine, is that going to be open to the public?
It's for business.
It's targeted towards business owners?
Okay, well, I'm, I think I'm a member of the chamber, what used to be the chamber. And then I'm wondering if you got the letter from a business owner, Emily Rensel? She's concerned about the business owners who do not operate restaurants and, you know, parking issues and things of that nature. She suggested that the side streets be used for the restaurants rather than Third Street. So I'm wondering if this is going to be discussed tomorrow morning?
Cara, that's, we're not going to discuss that tomorrow morning. And, and the meeting is for the merchants. But when will we be having a discussion on, on the, fall, next week, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, the 9th?
Probably the, the soonest we'll be talking about this will be June 9th, next week, okay?
After HRB sees it on the 2nd.
This Rensel is a business owner in that block. Can she join by Zoom?
Yeah, sure, if she wants to, she's a business owner.
Certainly.
Right, so where is that information located?
Um, it just went out on the San Juan Committee, um, distribution list. It's been out at least once, if not twice. So how are you going to send those messages out? I'm not sure I'm meeting on them.
Okay, thank you, I'll let her know.
Okay, thank you.
She can also go to Brewery 25 or Doña Esther's to sit in with the.
Just across the street.
Anybody over there.
To participate.
To participate, yeah, thank you.
And, and just, just for clarification, the resolution adopted by the city council set forth certain, certain methodology that we're following. And that included the use of Third Street and, and the way the street was going to be closed and the center lane. So that's not up for discussion right now. Now it's designs and, and traffic plan.
Right. Okay. So where were we?
I'm super excited about the whole project.
I am, too. So, okay, so we're, now we're going to go on.
Six B.
Uh, to six B.
Okay.
Which is Unamaz.
So councilmember and members of the public, on May 3rd, when the county's health order expired, we lost the use of the penal code to enforce shelter in place provisions. And instead now are following guidelines provided by the state. And these guidelines are difficult for every, every city in this state to, to enforce and to manage. And I shared some frustration from some California cities with the council last Tuesday. And, and things can get, the unrest can get pretty harsh trying to enforce these rules. So having said that, most businesses are complying with the state guidelines. They are about 12 pages long. And on page 10, it talks about bars specifically. What we're doing right now is we're enforcing this by calling the county or calling the state and asking them to respond. And so this number and, and email address is the best tool the city has and the citizens. So please take note of this in case you see a concern. I was asked to, to close a, a bar last week and explain to the councilmembers that, that we don't have the tools. We don't have the local tools to close a bar. And, and the city attorney can weigh in on this, that an open business has certain vested rights to keep their business open. And so when the state alcohol beverage commission and when the county health officer create laws for local businesses to follow, it puts the city in a pinch. It, it puts us in a really hard place. And, and I think both I was frustrated last week and the councilmembers were frustrated last week, because we didn't know what to do. So the reason we moved this item from an action item to a discussion item is because if we were going to take a severe action like closing a business of any kind, we would have to do, follow the due process. We would have to provide them with, with advanced notice, provide them with a hearing, the ability to voice their opinion and their, and their position on the matter, and then have a deliberative conversation before a policy was approved. So having said that, we could. So having said that, we can still schedule this for a hearing, um, and come back. Uh, assuming the city attorney could help us with some language, some law, a law that we could adopt. Um, but in the meantime, um, we are having limited success with county public health. And, uh, also having, uh, limited success with the A B C. We understand that they are enforcing. So, uh, having said that, um, the sheriff, uh, could not be here today and, uh, sent me this email that I'll share with everybody. Uh, the sheriff has redirected me this evening and I will, uh, be unavailable for the meeting since Captain Taylor. The sheriff wanted me to encourage you to do the following. Have your city attorney research administrative means to deal with Unamos, the bar in particular. Um, pull permits, issue a cease and desist order, et cetera. Continue to lean on the A B C to go after, uh, their liquor license for non-compliance. Continue to utilize public health for compliance regarding the guidelines from the governor's office. So we have a liquor license and a health permit that could be at risk. As, as of this meeting, we do not know if a criminal remedy, we don't, we don't know of a criminal remedy for the problem. There are many nuances in the guidelines and laws that, uh, that, that they're utilizing, the state. Though it, it may not be the intent of the guidance for them to operate in gray areas, boxes of pizzas delivered. There's no clear-cut violation that they are dealing, that they are doing it, so it seems. So I, I know we can't take action tonight, but please encourage the council members to reach out to Captain Taylor tomorrow if needed. So, um, I'm sure that, um, Captain Taylor, who could not be here tonight, is unfortunate. We have, we have gone and we've talked to the owner and I believe, um, Yolanda is, is on, uh, Ms. Torres is on the line, uh, participating in our meeting tonight. So that's great, we can hear from her. Um, we do have, uh, letters, uh, of, of agreement, uh, simple paragraphs signed by Doña Esters, um, JJ's Burgers and Hardinas, uh, to provide food for them, which is allowed under the A B C's, uh, regulations. And, you know, it really, one of the reasons this caught us off guard, I think, is because the A B C regulations went into place on the twentieth of May. And they opened on the twentieth of May. So, um, we, you know, without warning, this stuff happens up in Sacramento. And it's like, ah, what do we do with this? So it's been frustrating, I think, on all ends. And, um, I'm anxious to hear perhaps first from the city attorney and then, um, and then from the council and, and the, and Yolanda Torres.
Okay.
Well, what, what's really important here is that the, when the state, when they issued the fifth notice of regulatory relief, it specifically says in there that if a licensee is found to be abusing the relief provided by this notice or if the licensee's actions jeopardize public health, safety, or welfare, the department may summarily rescind the relief as to that licensee at any time. So really, the state A B C gave itself the power to regulate this, um, relief that they gave to the, um, to the bars to operate, um, as, as Unamos is operating. But they also gave themselves the power to enforce it. So the A B C really has to be involved in, um, enforcing their law. We don't have any ability as a city to step in and enforce their law. So without, um, you know, the only really ideas I have for you, because I don't even know if we brought this back for a hearing, um, what kind of enforcement we could do. I, you know, we can't pull their business license because, um, that is a non-discretionary permit. So we can't go in and take their business license. We don't regulate their health permit. So I don't even really know, um, what exactly we would do as a city. I mean, the only thing that I can really think of, we had in Carmel, where the tuck box was opened over here and, um, they went into court and they did a, um,
injunction.
Uh, uh, an action to close them down based on, uh, it being a public nuisance. So that would be the only thing that I could do. But I don't really even know what to bring back to the city for you guys to even have a hearing. Um, you just don't have the authority, I don't think, to close them down. And, you know, this is so new. Um, the reason it's, it's also new is because, as you probably know, San Benito, um, you're lucky enough to be, you know, one of the first counties that, um, bars are allowed. You know, you, you made the statistics really early because of the low population. And so I don't really even have any other cities to, their experiences to draw from at this point, to see what they did to close down a business that wasn't operating. I would really encourage you guys to direct all your comments to be the squeaky, squeaky wheel with the A B C and make them go in and, um, enforce this order, this regulation. And I would also caution the business owner that, um, there's huge penalties of losing your A B C license. And that's not where you want to go. So I think voluntary compliance is the way to go at this point.
Thank you, Deb.
What's going on? Okay. All right. So, um, do we have any comments?
Council members first.
Council members? Uh, Sessa?
No comments.
No comment? I, I.
I have one, this is Yolanda Torres.
We're gonna.
I'd like to know.
No, I'd like to.
We're, 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 we're asking council to, to say questions and comments? Just stay on, stay on the line and we'll come to you.
Well, I'm sorry, okay.
That's okay, that's all right. So Councilman Freeman, do you have any com, uh, questions or comments? Is he there?
I'm here. Number one, um, I've got quite a bit of experience in, in these type of things with, um, environmental health and safety, where we do have specific codes that we can, can, um, uh, enforce on businesses and, and actually shut them down if, if needed. Uh, but, but number one, first I'd like to say my heart goes out to the business owners who, who have been adversely affected by this, uh, situation. Of course, no one would ever want this pandemic. And, uh, I mean, I certainly don't want to see anybody hurt, but I do think it should be a level plan to feel. Um, I'm wondering if, um, I read through the, um, the COVID nineteen industry guidance for dine-in restaurants. And it basically says everything except a health and safety plan. It basically requires you to have all the elements of a health and safety plan, but it doesn't require one. So I'm wondering if, uh, if, if we can't get the environmental health to act on that. Uh, that, that, that's just an idea. Um, it, you know, it's, uh, a, a, a different way of going about it. Um, I, I, I do think, um, voluntary compliance on Unamos's part would be, would be the best course of action. I do think that they'll, they'll get their way in probably less than a week. Maybe even later this week.
Okay, thank you. Councilman DeVries, do you have anything to say?
Yes, ma'am, I do, thank you. And I think, um, my questions mainly are gonna be directed, uh, to the city attorney, to you, Deb. Uh, I understand the reliance on the state of California, uh, notably the governor's office, Governor Newsom's office with these, uh, gubernatorial directives and also, um, the A B C offices, which is the state of California. And then below that, we've got San Benito County and its health official that, that are, is and are, uh, board direct, and the board supervisors are, are executing these directives. And then we have us, the city of San Juan Batista, sitting underneath all of that. And so my question intuitively is what does the city maintain in terms of leverage over business, well, business owner that could serve as our opportunity to enforce the rules, regulations, uh, things that we want to see happen with our business owners? So the only two things that came to mind, apart from an alcohol license or anything else, was, uh, just a city business license, which you referenced a little bit, Deb, in your comments. And then also perhaps a conditional use permit that was granted by the planning commission when the business opened. Do any of those licenses provide an opportunity for, for a city in general to say, well, you're not, you're not playing by the rules and for us to issue you a license and allow you to do business, you need to play by the rules? So unless and until you're willing to do that, your business license, which enables you to, to do business, is going to be suspended, revoked, whatever, just put on, put on ice. What leverage do we have by, by virtue of our own city licenses? So, Don, do they have a conditional use permit? Because I thought they didn't.
No, they, they went in where, uh, Mom and Pops was a pre-existing bar. It's an entitled use in the commercial zone.
Okay, because if they had a conditional use permit, I mean, that's when we scheduled the hearing and pulled the use permit. But they don't have a use permit.
No.
And a business license is non-discretionary. So you can't pull the business license because you don't like what they're doing. So the only thing that I would be able to do to enforce is to bring an action in the Superior Court, um, for a public nuisance. And I'd have to prove it, um, you know, I'd bring an action for a, um, injunctive relief, which you're familiar with. So I'd have to prove that they actually weren't violating the law and were, were a public nuisance in order to get a injunction, get a temporary restraining order, the first stage of injunction against them. And I don't think you have that showing, at least as far as I know. Well, the, but the issue of the business license is interesting to me, Deb, because a bit, it, and I'm just talking in generalities now, not with regard to Unamos or anything in particular, but just in general, it can kind of help, I think, all of us with our edification of municipal law. If, if a business is existing at the pleasure of a city where they've been, they've asked for it, paid for it, and given a business license, isn't it somewhat implicit that they will be able to continue to use that business license as long as they're obeyed by the laws of the city? Regardless of a conditional use permit, they just have a plain old business license. What if they're doing something? What if they're doing something illegal? Can't the business license be revoked? So I think that you can go in and, and revoke the business license if they're completely illegal. Um, but I don't think you have that binding here. You saw Eric, um, you know, the sheriff said that they're not doing anything illegal in his email. Okay, well, that's, that's helpful though, because now we're, we're kind of defining the issue, aren't we? Though the city does maintain the ability to revoke a business license in the situation of really abject illegality. But here, doesn't seem factually that we have abject illegality going on that might serve as the basis of a business license revocation. Am I saying that right? Right, it's, you know, it's a complicated issue, Dan. Um, you know, we'd have to, um, you know, look at there's, you know, s- s- standards there involved that I'm, I'm not exactly sure of at this point. Um, but it's pretty complicated. And you do have to have, you know, a showing of, you know, illegality. And, um, you know, the, the issues that I'm thinking of is when the business license wasn't issued because, um, it was illegal. But a business license usually is a taxing device, it's not an enforcement device.
It's a revenue.
It's usually a way to tax a business.
Revenue financing.
Yeah, I understand that from a revenue standpoint, but it seems that it's also a way for a municipality to say like, okay, yeah, you, you're, this business can operate here. I'm gonna give you a license that says so. And as far as, I just want to pass this along, as far as, you know, this food chain that I described, city and then going up to the county and then going up to the state of California. As far as the county is concerned, I had an opportunity to speak with Supervisor Patello an hour or so before our meeting tonight. And he wanted to pledge his, um, support and assistance to do whatever needed to be done at the county level to help with enforcement of these issues, whether that's through the health officer and the health department or what have you. I guess Anthony drove by Unamos on Sunday and was not pleased at all with what he saw. Well, I was just gonna add, if you Google rogue bars in California and you'll come up with articles about, um, you know, the, the other, um, other jurisdictions grappling with the exact same issue. There's bars opening up and the county says, we're not enforcing, the city's enforcing, the city's saying, we can enforce, A B C's enforcing.
Yeah.
We're not, um, the only jurisdiction dealing with this issue right now. Yeah, I, I imagine not. All right, those are my questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Thank you, Deborah. Um, Vice Mayor, uh, Jordan.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm disappointed that some businesses are bending the rules to suit their needs. And, and I understand that everybody wants to open. Uh, but we as a community have been working so hard together to open up the city safely. And there are a couple of businesses in town that haven't been to meetings that, uh, are doing what they feel that they can do to, to do what they want to do. I'm just disappointed. That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you. And the only thing I, I, I agree with, uh, with what everybody has said. Um, basically, it's very disappointing to know that we have been working so hard, all of our merchants, everyone, everyone has gone by the book. And then, um, all of a sudden, we have somebody that is a rogue bar owner and, and causes a lot of grief for a lot of us. Uh, and it's a disappointment for all of our, uh, local merchants. So, um, that's all I have to say. So, um, I'll open it up to, uh, public comment now.
Ms. Torres, you want to speak?
What is it that I am not complying with? I don't understand the terminology. What are the components?
Who, who, who is speaking, please?
This is Ms. Torres, Yolanda Torres.
This is Yolanda Torres.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's the business owner.
So in, in the, uh, in the state's guidelines that were shared with you, Liz Turner, I believe, shared them with you maybe twice.
Yes, she did.
Back on page nine, it talks about physical distancing guidelines. Uh, bar area should remain closed to customers. It says clearly on page ten. Um, maximum occupancy rules inside the establishment based on its size. Limit the number of people inside using permeable barriers between service tables or, or at the bar, should it be open. Limit the number of patrons to single table and household unit. Um, it was reported to me this morning that, yesterday, it was shoulder to shoulder in your establishment, that we might even been pushing the fire code. So, so it, it's pretty clear to me that, that this is black and white, pretty straightforward direction on how, how we should be running our, our restaurants. And even inside the restaurant, the bars have to remain closed. So Doña Esters' bar is closed, Hardinas' bar is closed. So, um, that's, that's the purpose. That's why we have a liaison to help business owners understand these guidelines so that as they roll out their businesses, they're in compliance and everyone's on the, playing by the same sheet of music. That's the word I want to say.
Yeah.
It was not. A group of people came, they're together, they sit together. I had, uh, the sixty-foot chairs, um, it's a bar tub, so I can be open. The restaurant, they have a good guideline, I have a good guideline. And what other components they have, of course, that is very compliant.
Is it hard to understand?
It's, it's hard to understand you, um, but we have conflicting stories. Your story is different than, than the people that we talked to today.
Yes, it's very different.
Um, and Supervisor Patel's story is different than yours.
It is, it is.
Photograph.
It was, uh, going to shoulder, and if there was shoulders, or if they, they came in together.
Well.
And then, you know, they're coming, they're coming in together, or three come in or four. And they come in as a group or as a family. They can sit together.
Um, ma'am, city manager, may I ask a question of the owner?
Yes.
Ma'am, uh, this is Dan DeVries here. Let me ask you, or let the council ask you, what have you done personally to familiarize yourself with these rules and regulations from the governor and from the A B C and from the county? Number one, and number two, what have you done to implement those rules in a standard like all the other bars in town are doing? And I think most importantly for you right now is to explain to the satisfaction of this council what you intend to do differently going forward. Because if you say you're gonna keep doing everything the exact same way, there might be an issue there.
Uh, Liz came in, I don't remember last night. And she talked to me, you need to do this, you need to do that. And that's why I thought my office was a different mistake. Going forward, uh, just for exit hand, I am going to remove the pool table and I'm going to also give it more, more room. Um, I'm going to remove also the, the quickness, the. I'm going to remove also the equipment, the speakers, the four speakers that I'm going to remove. We are actually going to start probably giving everybody a number, so I know exactly when they're in here, and going forward, I think we can do, we can do that. Oh, and, okay, yeah, that is
Yes, Ms. Torres, you know, you were kind of going in and out, so I wasn't able to hear everything that you said, but what, you're going to give them a number?
Okay. Going forward, I said I'm going to remove the pool table and the four speakers I have, the, I'm going to remove that. And to make sure that that I don't have, that I'm just, you know, I don't, that just the sort of mom are going to come in, I was thinking, well, we could just give everybody a number, and then we know, okay, it's only thirty-five minutes to come in, and that's it. And I can do that.
I just have one question for you. Are you a full bar? Do you sell hard liquor, or are you just beer and wine?
I am just beer and wine.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Ms. Torres, you have a forty-two license, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, do you have any questions? Does anybody else have any questions? Any other comments? Okay.
That's it?
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Torres.
Thank you.
We'll be watching. So, now we go on to item C, the fiscal year 2020, 21 budget update and revised budget calendar.
Thank you. So, again, we're going to talk about reopening businesses tomorrow at nine, so hopefully if you're a business owner, you're on that list and you have the link that you need tomorrow morning at nine. Sorry, people are still trying to get into our meeting. Okay, all right. So, it's been complicated, to say the least, trying to get time and a day to put the budget together, and also there are a lot of uncertainties. I've been working closely with our CPA, who's attended most of the California municipal finance officers' meetings. She said she would guess maybe two-thirds of the cities are simply adopting a resolution allowing their budget to remain on normal status through the month of July until we can get enough facts together. The slowing down of our revenue won't hit our bank account until later in July and August, so anticipating the impact, we've tried to do that. I would say our sales tested okay this weekend, so we'll see how that goes. So, there are a lot of uncertainties, and we need time to address and respond to the water issues as well. We have deadlines, as the council knows, that are immediately before us, and we've got some research and some responses and other things to work on in that regard. So, I will not be ready, anticipate, we don't anticipate it being ready till the end of July. We do have a new format that's much easier to read and work with and understand, so I look forward to presenting that to you when we're done, but I don't want to make any mistakes because we're in a hurry, trying to do too many things at once. So, there's no harm in waiting, there's no legal requirement like the state has to adopt a budget by June 15th or the 1st of July, it's not in our, we don't have a charter, so it's not in our charter. So, with that, we hope to be here at our regular meeting June 16th to present our budget and draft form, and then a resolution to extend the existing budget into the next fiscal year. And then we would try and hold a community hall meeting June 30th with council approval, I hope, as early as July 14th, assuming we can adopt our budget at a special meeting. And I say that because it's related to my own personal schedule, which is the next slide. And my in-laws would love to see their grandkids the week of July 18th, which conflicts with our regular meeting in July, so that's where we sit. I wanted to give the council an update. I would have the budget to you by now, under normal circumstances, and circumstances are simply abnormal. But there's no tragedies, there's no drama in our budget right now that I'm aware of. Things are stable as we move forward. So, I felt obligated to share that with the council, the city of David, because that's one thing the city manager needs to do, is bring you a balanced budget. Are there any questions about the budget that we could answer?
Councilman Flottis, do you have any questions or comments on the budget?
I have a question, Chair, but I'd like to, I do have a comment. I'd like to thank Don for all the work that he does for this tiny little village, and I know he's out there doing good for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Freeman.
I'd just like to agree with what Caesar just said, and I'm hoping for the best on the budget, and look forward to seeing it in late June.
Thank you. Councilman DeVries.
No comments or questions, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Jordan.
No comment, thank you.
Okay, all right. And thank you so much for your hard work, and it's fine, it's fine that we're a little bit late, it'll be all right.
It's all good.
Okay.
We're not going to fall apart.
Okay, no, we're not. And for that end, to help me not fall apart, my family is hoping after graduation to spend a couple days with my relatives in Santa Barbara, June 5th and June 8th. We could have a meeting June 9th, but it would be similar to tonight, there wouldn't be a lot of written reports, it would just be an update, so we could certainly do that. And because we're not meeting on the 2nd, maybe we want to just have, you know, a COVID-19 update and a slideshow similar to today's. So, I'm open to that. I just want to be here on the Friday and Monday before then. And then trying to schedule special meetings in between, we have availability of dates of June 23rd and June 30th, and July 7th and July 14th. July 14th is when we would bring the budget back, because my in-laws want to go camping for a week, the week of July 17th. So, with that, we would come back July 28th, and then we have an August 4 planning commission meeting. So, I just wanted to spell out the schedule so people could plan their summer.
So, we would have our regular meeting on July, what's
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Yeah.
Yeah, just a week sooner.
I don't, I'm not going anywhere.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Councilman Cesar, do you have a comment, question?
Except you're having a meeting on my anniversary, July 7th, I think, forty-something, forty-some odd years.
We'll make it as short as we can.
Okay.
That's okay.
All right, Councilman Freeman?
I'm not going anywhere.
Good. Councilman Freeman?
Nothing to comment about right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilman DeVries?
Uh, no, just where in Santa Barbara, Don, and can we bring anything?
Here, here.
So, my in-laws live in Golita, and it's the greatest bike ride ever to one of the most beautiful beaches in the state, right there south of UC Santa Barbara.
Yes, it is. Used to ride there all the time.
Very nice.
Thank you for offering to drive.
I'll bring my bike.
Oh, no, that's a scary image.
I got a Harley, you can go back tomorrow.
There you go, bring the Harley, Cesar.
There you go.
I hope everyone can get away for some time with family.
Yeah, no, okay, good. Actually, the 18th is our son's, or the son's birthday. Okay, so we'll go on to sitting council meeting scheduled for July, we just did that. So, we need to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.